City Council meeting to order. And with that, we'd like to have the invitation with Dr. Tommy Gray from Asbury Methodist Church.
Thank you. Would you bow with me as we pray together? Lord, we just acknowledge now that you are with us. You're present in all places. And so, God, we're thankful that you are here with us. We're thankful for the blessings you've given to our city. We recognize that every good gift is from you, as your word says. And we also recognize, as you said to Abraham, that we are blessed to be a blessing. So, God, may we as individuals and those in leadership in our community always be mindful of our call to use those gifts that you've given us to bless others. Lord, we're also mindful that the good things that we have are also a result of good leadership. And we're thankful for our leaders, for our mayor, our council, all the others that lead. God, what a difficult time it is to lead with COVID, with social unrest, with the changes within our country. And so, God, I just pray for them today that you would bless them, bless their families. I pray, God, you'd give them incredible wisdom. Lord, we're thankful for knowledge. But, Lord, we need more than simple knowledge. We need wisdom as we tackle complex issues and certainly in the midst of issues that we've never faced in quite this way before. Lord, do we pray for their families, that they would be guarded by you, Lord, that they would know that you are with them. Even as we've just recently come through the Advent and Christmas season, we're reminded that you are Emmanuel, God, with us. We're never alone. We don't walk through this season alone. We don't lead in this season alone. We don't seek to give direction out of our own knowledge, but, Lord, from your wisdom. So, we pray, God, your continued blessing on our city and upon our leaders. And may we indeed be those that bless others as you've blessed us. We pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Could please join me in the plate?
Translations to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God and equal rights.
Can I get the real call, please?
Mayor Finley.
Here.
Councilmember Robleski.
Here.
Councilmember Spears.
Here.
Councilmember Powell.
Here.
Council President Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Here.
Councilmember Denzine.
Here.
Councilmember Seifert.
Here.
All right, we've got a quorum, we've got a full house. I will ask everybody tonight, if you'll please keep your mask on, we do have a full house here tonight. So, let's practice social distancing as best we can and try to keep our masks on unless you're speaking. With that, we'll move into approval of minutes, and we have minutes from January 11th. Move to approve.
Second.
Right, got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
I'm sorry, I missed who made the motion.
John.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
And motion passes. And we have the minutes from January 20th. Move to approve.
Second.
It can be John, Teddy and John.
Motion in a second. We have any discussion? Not, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
And motion passes. Moving to presentations and awards, and we'll start with a swing in of four new police officers.
Thank you. First, I'd like to call Victoria Baring, Officer Devin Bullington, and Officer Tristan Williams. If you guys would just line up right over there off the table. Will administer the oath of office. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name. Do most solemnly and sincerely promise and swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Alabama, that I will enforce the laws and ordinances of this state and city so long as I serve as a police officer of this city, that I will faithfully and honestly discharge the duties of the office and the position for which I'm about to enter to the best of my knowledge and ability. So, help me, God. Now, we're going to present your shields to you, your badges to you. There are two times the badges presented to an officer. First upon graduation from the academy and the second upon being promoted, and both are very exciting times. A law enforcement officer's badge is perhaps the most visible and recognizable symbol of policing around the world. It's seen by many as a sign of authority, sacrifice, and service. Although it's most closely associated with public service professionals such as firefighters, correctional officers, and police officers, the use of badges actually long predates the modern concept of law enforcement and policing as we know it. When you think of the word badge, you most likely picture the metal shield, star, or similar emblem worn by officers and firefighters. In fact, the term is used to describe any small object such as a name tag, pin, or an emblem. It can be displayed often prominently to identify an individual. This is the concept from which the badge originated and from where the modern police badge evolved. European nobility was known for their use of heraldry, coats of arms, and insignia to represent their house and their history. During the Middle Ages, a time when power was not consolidated and national borders were far more fluid than they are today, badges were worn by commoners and nobility alike. This showed their allegiance to the house or to a group. And the wearing of badges was not limited to a specific job or a duty. The badges were made of various materials, including cloth, metal, and even jewels. Our profession's most visible service, symbol of service, has taken on an almost iconic meaning as the profession of policing has evolved. To the police officer, the badge represents public trust with the authority to act and to which the officer has a duty to remain true. From a practical standpoint, officers wear badges as a means to identify who they are and who they work for. Though it's very different from the badge we wear today as Madison police officers, this was the badge that I was sworn in with. And as you put that badge on your chest before the beginning of each shift, I want you to look at it because it says the same thing that this one says. It tells us who we work for and who we serve. The citizens of the city of Madison, who give us our authority, who trust us to protect and serve. The law enforcement badge is an easily recognizable sign of legal authority. From an altruistic perspective, uniformed police officers proudly wear their badges to show their allegiance to communities they serve and pride that they have in their profession. The badge represents the final goal of arduous training for recruits preparing to graduate from the police academy. Earning the badge on graduation day represents the culmination of a tremendous effort. It's an achievement, as well as a new beginning in a career as they enter field training and ultimately progress to solo duty as police officers. A badge-pinning ceremony like we will conduct tonight is the symbol of a new beginning, and the weight of the badge can now be felt. As when an officer rises in rank, more responsibility is required. The left front pockets of most police uniforms are usually reinforced to hold the weight of the badge, but while wear it on the left side because it's over your heart. But there may be a little history involved here, too. The knights of old used to hold their coats of arms shields on their left sides. Very soon, a family member will be asked to step forward to pin the badge on the uniform of the newly promoted officer. For it is this person and the family behind the officer who will be the most important in your lives. We are a community of deep-standing traditions that are kept alive from generation to generation. A badge pinning like we're doing tonight is a way of how we will continue to honor those who served this community and this country. Now, I ask that you would open ranks and your family members would step forward to pin those shields on your chest, those badges on your chest. Family, come on up. City Council, citizens of Madison, the U.S. Madison Police Officer Public Service.
Thank you, and we look forward to y'all's service to the city. Next, we, on our presentation awards, we have Mayor Finley. Today's the month of January is Human Trafficking Awareness Month.
So, this is a proclamation on human trafficking. I'll read a couple of things. I'll get you right here, and then if you want to say a word or two, you can. But I'll just read a couple of these. It says, "Whereas human trafficking is a very real problem facing the world today, although it can take many forms, including debt bondage, forced marriage, slavery, and commercial sexual exploitation, in every case, it goes against the core principles of individual freedom and civil rights that our state and nation stand for. The city of Madison, Alabama, is committed to ensuring that our community remains on the front lines in combating this deplorable crime. Whereas the first step in eliminating human trafficking is to educate others, we must work to ensure that all our residents are aware of this problem and how to spot it, work together as a community so that human traffickers are punished and to protect and assist their victims." So, whereas we ask all residents of this community to join us in raising the visibility of this crime against whose victims are all too often invisible, together we can become more informed about the pressing issue and work to combat its injustices. So, now, therefore, I, Paul Finley, Mayor of the City of Madison, Alabama, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2021 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in the city of Madison, Alabama. And I'll present this to you.
Thank you.
Betcha.
In order to talk, and you can hear me. As Chair of the Alabama Human Trafficking Task Force and Chair of the North Alabama Human Trafficking Task Force, this is an extremely important document. We ask all cities and towns to do this across the state. In 2019, we only had about 48 communities sign this type of proclamation. Last year, in 2020, we had 149. So, we're getting there. We're trying to raise awareness. We're trying to improve the laws in the state against traffickers, and we appreciate this very much. Thank you so much.
And I do want to say, I know Megan Nigrell has been a big part of this and other folks that have. We had a situation last year in the city of Madison, which, because of this awareness that we have started bringing, we were able to work on with the federal government. So, positive things as far as letting people know. Appreciate what you guys are doing. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Debbie Overcash for the presentation for Madison Street Festival Grants.
Hey, thank y'all for letting me come again tonight. I've got my Madison Street Festival hat on tonight, and I wanted to let you know that, as disappointed as we were that we could not have the 2020 Street Festival, I think everybody understood why. The Street Festival has grown by leaps and bounds since 1974, when it began. And we are very fortunate to have the support of very generous sponsors annually. Of course, this year we did not, but we do hold a contingency for things just like this, and so, we were prepared. Normally, we get 25 to 40 grant applications a year. This year, we got 19. The grant process, there is a grant committee on the Street Festival, and all grants have to be education-based. That does not necessarily mean a school, as long as somebody's learning something that is education-based. So, this year of the 19 grants that we received, 13 were able to be honored. We did get together $5,000. Normally, we would give out $10,000, but this year, we're going to give out 5,000. The recipients do already have their checks in hand. Normally, we would have them here and let you all see them and the wonderful things they're doing, but it's a COVID kind of year, so we're not doing that. But I did want to let you know who did win those 13 grants. So, the schools are heavily represented here, and as a former PTA president of all of them, I'm really glad to have these here. Bob Jones High School Construction Academy for Exterior Calming Area Resource Room. Bob Jones High School Band, a Concert Tuba. Discovery Middle School Digital Literacy and ELA and Innovations Classroom. College and Career Center, Bob Jones High School Chairs. Bob Jones High School HOSA, Community Service Deck Washing. Bob Jones High School Medical Academy, Medical Interventions in a Laboratory Setting. Rocket City Church, Read at Rocket City. Madison City Schools Dress for Success Community-Based Instruction. James Clemens High School, an Art Board. Discovery Middle School Drama Department, Outdoor Theater Classrooms. Madison City Community Orchestra, 2021 Scholarship Award. Bob Jones Racing, a White Car 2.0, and Bob Jones High School Band, a Yamaha Harmony Director Purchase. All of those do total, too, a grand total of $5,000. So, again, we were able to be able to do that. And just so you know, the committee is hard at work. We're just in the planning stages and looking at what it's going to look like in 2021. And we do hope that there is a 2021 Madison Street Festival. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Debbie.
Thanks, Debbie, all for all you're doing. Appreciate being able to get those out.
Next, we have Ms. Tina Clark with Madison Arts Council for their annual appropriation.
Taking my mask off so I can talk. I have a presentation I was going to give. It's just a couple of slides. It's not very long. So, go, I guess I can do it here. Never mind. How does this work? Hey, there we go. As you all know, our 2020 events were all canceled this year except for our Christmas Card Lane. And we did an encore Christmas Card Lane, which means we had no new participants on that. For next year, or this year, for 2021, we are planning on doing teacher grants. I'm going to probably get those going in March. We have a different schedule for our summer concerts, and we are hoping, I say we, because Madison Arts Council is going to partner with MPV. That's on the next slide. And we are going to try to do more concerts, and we are going to do them through May, June, July, and August on Thursdays. And that is with the hope that Home Place Park is finished in the time that it's supposed to be. October 21st, Madison Street Festival, we'll have our student arts hit. And we're hoping that we'll get to have Kris Kringle Market this year, along with all of our events in downtown Madison for Christmas. Then, this event here is, the Madison Arts Council is going to partner with the Madison Visionary Partners, and like I said, for the concerts. And we have a big goal. I didn't put anything specific on there yet because today was our first real meeting. I did that before I came here, finished the slide up there. But we're going to try to put together enough funding to get the construction of the pavilion done, if we can, before the concerts start. We're also going to work this year and on to try to work with these concerts to do capital campaigns for MPV and for maintenance and other things like that that need to be done. And then, the sculptures, that's our biggest expense. We currently have eight sculptures in Madison. They have not been removed. Normally, they would already be gone, and new ones would be going in place. But because of COVID, the Huntsville Arts just wanted to keep what we had, and so, we're going to keep what we have for another year. But I do have to pay $3,200 of the money that we have for the six sculptures. And when you look up there, you're going to see where it says Spaces App Support. That is $800 that we have to pay because they have an app. If you are not aware or have not seen it, you can find it on your Apple Store, or you can find it on the Android Store as well, and you can download it. And it tells you about each sculpture throughout Madison County. Madison County has sculptures from Madison City, from Diddo Landing to Alabama A&amp;M and all in between, UAH. But again, that $3,200 covers the six sculptures. And then, in October, we will start planning for 2022 to move on to the next phase of new sculptures. And I have nine on there because if we do one more than we did, or if we do some, if we do two more, three more than what we did this last time, then you can see how much it's going to cost. So, we're going to have to do a little fundraising ourselves. And Madison Visionary Partners is also going to help us to try to build that gap from the appropriation during the events that we have planned and also to make sure that we have the money to take care of our expenses. Our storage unit is our biggest, probably our biggest expense besides our insurance that we have to pay because we have to have insurance. The storage unit is where we keep all the cards and materials that we use for our events and things like that. For more information about Madison Arts Council, we would love to have more people join us. We would love to have new ideas and fresh ideas, events that are coming up. We try to have the Art for Pause every year. I don't know if we'll get to have that. We're going to try to do, our biggest one is the Kris Kringle Market. If we can find a venue that will work for us, then we're definitely going to try to do Kris Kringle Market. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Tina, what would the ideal venue be? Where have we had it? We've had it at Dublin before. Where else?
We did not have it at Dublin years ago, in 2019, because there was a swim meet that was something about a swim meet that was changed, and we could not have it at Dublin. And then, 2020, we didn't even have it. So, this year, I haven't checked to see if Dublin has the swim meet again, or if that's something that's not going to happen. If it's not, and we can have that Thursday, I mean, that Saturday back, then that would be fantastic. But if not, I don't know. Madison doesn't have a lot of places. And we tried it at the Bob Jones Gymnasium, which was the small gymnasium there, but it didn't work well. It did not pan out well. So, I don't know, honestly. I've been thinking about that, and I thought maybe Discovery Middle School Gym might be better, if they would allow us to do that, if they don't have basketball going on, which in November, basketball. So, it's kind of hard to get a place to have it, but we're going to do our very best.
Good. What's the date for that?
That is the Saturday before Thanksgiving is the normal. I don't know the exact date, but it's the Saturday before Thanksgiving is when we'll try to have that event.
I'll send you an email.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I know you did a lot of work into it. Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Ralph Nelson with the Trash Pandas, talking about the 2020 activities.
Thank you for inviting us here. A little bit about our season, or what I call the non-season of 2020. When we asked Madison to finance a state-of-the-art $47 million stadium, we were asked to make some commitments. And some of those commitments, first was to turn Toyota Field into a community venue by having non-baseball events. There are 70 minor league baseball games in a season. It's now 69. So, that meant 295 days a year that there was not a baseball game. And that in order to finance a stadium properly, we needed to put on non-baseball events. And we'll talk about that in a second. Second thing we did was, we were asked, the mayor specifically asked me to build the best organization in baseball and to hire the best people in the game. And we talked a lot about people in the local market. We have fortunately been able to do that. But for the most part, we had to go outside the game or outside the market in order to introduce you to some of the best people in the game. And I just, real quickly, and if those of you, this entire group back here is Trash Panda employees. And just to introduce you to a couple of them, I'll just ask them to step forward and wave. Garrett Fairman, our general manager, who came from California and moved 2,000 miles to come here. Lisa Nelson, most of you know, who came with me from Vermont and oversaw the biggest by three times merchandise department in all of minor league baseball. Lindsay Nupp came from Lehigh Valley, Pennsylvania. She was recruited by us because she's the very, very best in our business and is award-winning and is recognized throughout our business as the best in her job, which is entertainment, marketing, promotions. Ryan Curry came from New Mexico, Albuquerque, New Mexico. He is our executive chef. He is also recognized with awards as the very best in the business. Josh Carey could not be here tonight, and you know why? Because Josh Carey is working at our store at Broad Street. Because this is what, and we'll get into this in a second, this is what our staff did. Josh Carey comes from baseball and broadcasting royalty, and he works behind the counter at our stores because he cares so much about our business. Rob Sternberg, best in the business at production. He put this PowerPoint together among, along with everything you ever see on that great video board at Toyota Field. Nick Seraso came from Boston. He's our Director of Business Analytics. Jill Webb came from Biscilia, California. She is our Director of Finance. Nate Leiser, who came from San Diego, California, because he is the world expert at tickets.com, which is our ticket platform. Trevor Kelly came from North Virginia, and he is one of our top salespeople right now. And then, I want to point out two others, and I did miss some folks, and I apologize to them. Ricky Fernandez, Tricky Ricky, who is our promotions person. And Ricky Fernandez is graduated Bob Jones High School. And Lindsay thinks, and I think he's going to be one of the best in the business at what he does. And then, of course, Gail Mylum, who spent 26 years working for the city of Madison and is now a director of our special events. And as you'll see in a second, we've had more special events than any team in baseball. I also was asked for local ownership, local management, community involvement, and stadium upkeep. And the reason those four things were asked of us is because those are the four things that the Huntsville Stars lacked at the end of their time, and the reason that the Huntsville Stars are now in Biloxi. And we have done all of that. And then, the last thing was to protect Madison's reputation, enhance Madison's image nationally. And we have done that with, by far, times three, the most popular name in minor league baseball. And it was a tough one, as many of you recall. I did not like the idea of putting the word trash in front of our team, but I was told by some very, very smart people that that was what we needed to do. Our name is our most valuable asset. And I stood right here in this chamber and heard a nice lady say that she would never come to a Trash Panda game because of the name, and we're sorry we lost her, but we have the most popular name in the minor leagues. Little bit about our 2020 non-season in review. The pandemic canceled the baseball season. On March 18th, we were the last team in minor league baseball to close their offices. On May 4th, our team came back, and on June 30th, they canceled the minor league season. season. The Trash Pandas have lost seventeen-point-eight million dollars in revenue because of the pandemic. Seventeen-point-eight million dollars we lost in revenue. We projected payments to the city uh before the pandemic of between one-point-four and one-point-five million dollars. Uh, as you'll see in a minute, we've come a long way toward that. Once the season was canceled, we faced two potential business strategies. The first was to furlough and lay off our staff and shut the business down. And that is uh, everybody, what ninety-eight percent of the minor league teams in the country did. They laid off their entire staffs. There were a couple uh companies that were, the owners had very deep pockets, and they allowed, they stayed open and paid their staff, but ninety-eight percent of the minor league teams shut down their operations. We didn't think that was right. So the second strategy was to sustain business with merchandise sales and non-baseball events. The reason I made that decision, and I made it personally, and it was a gamble, and it was a risk, was these folks here had moved from all over the country to come here and to um work in Madison, Alabama. And I didn't think, two or three months after they came here, that they needed to be laid off. They brought their families, they moved here. And secondly, what was much more important, even than that, was that we had committed to this city that you built a forty-seven and a half million dollar stadium, we're going to let this community use it. So we took that approach. Little bit about our merchandise sales that I mentioned uh a moment ago. We did one-point-six-one-six-eight-eight-four-eighty-eight in twenty twenty in merchandise sales in a pandemic year, one-point-six million dollars. And I can tell you that when I put together original projections, I was told to expect six-hundred-thousand dollars in merchandise sales our first season in the stadium with four-hundred-thousand people going through the gates. Instead, we did one-point-six-one-six million dollars in a pandemic. Uh, that is two-hundred-thousand more than we did in two thousand nineteen. And I'll, I'll note to you that the stores, our stores were closed for six weeks, and yet we were able to do two-hundred-thousand dollars more than we did the year before. We did six-hundred-and-forty-thousand-and-forty-two dollars and seventeen cents in online sales, and for the second straight year, we were the number one team in minor league baseball in online sales. We did one, eleven-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-seven online orders. Seventy-six percent of our sales were from outside Alabama. So seventy-six percent of that six-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars came from outside Alabama, which means that the Trash Panda name has become a national and an international phenomenon. The reality is, we've done three-point-eight, as of this morning, three-point-eight million dollars in merchandise sales all time in just twenty-seven months, and we will hit four million dollars before the first pitch is thrown at Toyota Field. Now, just to give you an example, when I left uh the ballpark on Thursday, they, our, our staff had just um finished inventory, and they had, before they finished inventory, they, they cleared all of our online orders. That was last Thursday. When I walked into this, to the stadium this morning, we had four-hundred-and-twenty-seven online orders in four days. And to give you an example, um Columbus, Ohio, I was at, I was at their ballpark last year, two years ago, and I asked, the Columbus Clippers are one of the all-time longest-tenured, most-popular, second or third-most in attendance in the United States, triple-A team. And I asked the lady, just because I was curious, who does your online orders? And she said, well, I do before I open the store every day. And I said, really? How many orders do you have? And her answer was, well, my God, two weeks ago, we had twelve one day. We had four-hundred-and-twenty-seven in four days. And when I left the office today, I looked at it, we had twenty-six today only, and that's because we slowed down. So non-baseball events, this is what we did um because we made a promise to do this. We had creative and unique events, and just to go through some of them, I'm sure you all heard of these. We did kids' day camps, kids' baseball instructional camps, block parties. Nine thousand people went to our block parties. Movie nights, we did five thousand people. We did fifteen days of travel ball, baseball for over forty games. We had a concert, we had a wedding. We had an event called the Barks and Brews for the dogs in the community. We had brushes and brunch where we taught people how to paint. We had twelve days of church services every Sunday morning in the stadium. We had a Republican, Madison County Republicans. We had a beer and wine fest. Toyota had corporate training, uh, there were corporate receptions, and of course, we had the big old fair in the parking lot. And then our big one was Christmas Spectacular. To give you a summary, we had a hundred-and-seventy-five events in two-hundred-and-fifteen days that Toyota Field was open. It opened on June first. That means that we had events in eighty-one percent of the days in, in uh Toyota Field. These folks all came to work in baseball, and they didn't work a single baseball game. They worked, as I said, kids' counselors, teaching people how to paint. They were at the fair. It was amazing. We had two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people go through Toyota Field this year. Two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, it's a little bit more, but I, I stopped doing the math. We generated one-point-seven-nine-six in revenue in non-baseball events, and most importantly, there is not a single report of a COVID-nineteen infection in any of the events at Toyota Field. Two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people in the era of social distancing. Uh, these folks, they cleaned every single rail, every single seat, took temperature of everybody that came in the ballpark. They devoted themselves to our non-baseball events. And our big one was the Christmas Spectacular and Winter Wonderland. We had fifty-two nights from November thirteenth to January third, in which we had uh Christmas events. Um, we had twenty-six-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-two cars and ninety-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-two people at our Christmas show. And I might uh tell you about the, the um, the light show was one-point-five miles, and I'll talk to you about the business models real quick. We had to make a choice on whether we were going to do this event or not because the people that put out, that sold us the light show told us that they did not trust that we were going to be able to break even. So instead, they, and break even, by the way, was sixteen thousand cars. So we did, we did more than ten thousand cars, more than the break-even point. And yet, we had to put up three-hundred-thousand dollars in our cash upfront in order to do this show. But we did it because we believed in the community. We also opened the Winter Wonderland, which was completely our own model. And again, these folks down here, let me, let me tell you something. Fifty-two nights, there are about two-thirds of the people in the back of the room that worked between forty and forty-five nights of the fifty-two nights and did not go home to their families till ten o'clock at night. Garrett Fairman worked forty-eight nights of, of the, of the thing. Had four nights that he went home. Uh, and at that Winter Wonderland, we had s'mores, apple cider, cookies, and ornaments, and we, we, I don't know if this is true or not, because I don't get around enough, but we were told by a whole lot of people that we had the only Santa Claus in um, in the area. We also had other characters, the frozen characters, the Grinch and Frosty the Snowman. So let me talk just for, oh, I got one other thing to tell you. How good a job we did with this, exactly how good a job we did with this. We were threatened to be sued by Radio City Music Hall and the Rockettes because we used the term Winter Wonderland. You would think that the Rockettes were not paying a lot of attention to what was going on in Madison, Alabama, but let me tell you, they were. Well, next year, we'll be changing the name. Want to talk for a minute about the financial relationship between Madison and the Trash Pandas. First of all, what you need to know, there are five revenue streams. And uh, Gail told me today, there's a whole bunch of people she talks to that doesn't realize what this lease is all about. So to go, go through it, we pay rent. The rent is two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year, and that rent is the base rent and a percentage rent. After we draw two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people, we pay a dollar ahead, everybody that comes in. We projected four-hundred-thousand people uh this year, which means we would have paid four-hundred-thousand dollars in rent had the baseball season be paid, been played, I'm sorry. Uh, naming rights, we pay one-half of the naming rights deal after net. Uh, that deal with Toyota is the biggest I know of in minor league baseball, except for one in Las Vegas. We pay one-half of the game parking uh net to the city of Madison. We pay, and we will pay for twenty twenty, one-half of the non-baseball event net revenue, and we pay sales tax for merchandise food and tickets. We have a one-million-dollar guarantee, minimum of one million dollars. And I will tell you that I have taken so much heat from uh my peers in baseball for that because we are the only team in baseball that guarantees revenue. There was a suggestion made by Councilman Smith uh when we negotiated the lease, and we agreed to it. We are the only team in baseball that guarantees revenue to a city, but that's our partnership. So here's the payments we're going to make to Madison for twenty twenty. First of all, for non-baseball events and naming rights, we're going to pay five-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and fifty-three cents. For city sales tax, we have already paid a hundred-and-one-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and sixty-two cents. So the total money we are actually paying to Madison in twenty twenty in a pandemic without a single minor league baseball game is six-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and fifteen cents. Had the pandemic not hit, we were ready to add the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar guaranteed rent, fifty-seven-thousand-six-sixty-two-seventy-eight. Sales tax on tickets that we sold, that we've now had to push into twenty twenty-one, twelve-thousand dollars, nine-hundred-and-eighty-five for parking that we already sold, and we pushed into uh twenty twenty-one. The total right there would have been nine-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-three-ninety-six-ninety-three before we opened the gates on opening day and sold a single hot dog. So we would have made easily, we would have made our guarantee. So there's a clause in our contract called the force majeure, and this is in every contract, every lease, and nobody ever thought they would ever have to utilize this, this clause. But it says, "Ballcor and the city agree that neither party shall be liable or responsible to the other party, nor deemed to have defaulted or breached this agreement for any failure in fulfilling or performing any term of this agreement when such failure delays caused by or results in the following force majeure events." And then they list a bunch of them, act of God, war, terrorist, and number F is action by any governmental authority. We all know that the uh state of Alabama stopped crowds and suspension of play by baseball by the baseball authorities, and we know that that actually happened. And so, but here's the financial relationship with our partners, you, the city of Ma- Madison, despite the force majeure protection. The Trash Pandas suffered an eighty-point-four loss percent, loss in revenues. Eighty-point-four percent of what we thought we were going to earn this year, we did not because of, of the COVID-nineteen. Nonetheless, Madison will receive sixty-four-point-six percent of the guaranteed revenue for a normal year despite the Trash Pandas only realizing nineteen-point-six percent of our anticipated revenues. So to, to go back through that, you will receive sixty-four points, six percent, we receive nineteen-point-six. The amount will be paid in full by the deadline on April fifteenth, which is the deadline um on our um, in the lease, and we are going to make, oops, one more. We're going to make a hundred-thousand-dollar down payment this evening. This check is not due until April fifteenth. We're going to, we are going to pay this tonight.
How's the lawyer get it?
So somebody asked me tonight, why are you paying that a hundred thousand, the a hundred thousand dollars three months early? And my um, my response was because I was asked. Mayor asked me Thursday if I would be willing to pay a hundred thousand dollars uh to make a payment. He didn't say the name, the number, and I said, absolutely, because that's what we do. Uh, we would like to pay the rest on April, around April fifteenth, when we would like to hold the ribbon-cutting ceremony that we didn't have last year with uh, hopefully between games of a doubleheader involving Bob Jones High School and James Clemens High School at Toyota Field. Little bit about the food and beverage equipment. One of the, one of the terms of the lease was the food and beverage equipment. It was part of the uh contract between um Hoare Construction and the city of Madison, but we had, we had said we would pay in negotiations for the food and beverage equipment, and we were on our way to paying that when COVID hit, and we actually lost a lot of funds that we were planning to use for startup costs. The total owed on that is seven-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-seven-fifty-five-forty-six. The payments made to date on that is two-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand-one-fifty-five-ninety, or thirty-nine percent of that bill has been paid. We still owe four-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-five-ninety-nine-fifty-six. And the mayor, very graciously, last week offered us to pay it over a number of years, and I told him that we would not do that. We will pay that amount by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, and if we are able to get uh some support from the federal government that we're trying to get on a couple of levels, we will pay it even sooner. I want to talk just for a second about the twenty twenty-one inaugural season because this is our new inaugural season, and I wanted to tell you what's going on. You may have read bits and pieces of this. There's a complete new governance structure in minor league baseball. The organization called Minor League Baseball, which is in St. Petersburg, Florida, no longer exists. The Southern League, which you all heard of, no longer exists. We now are an affiliate of Major League Baseball. There are one-hundred-and-twenty professional development licenses. PDL has become a very, very common term in our, our office, and the PDL, uh, there are only a hundred and twenty. Last year, at this time, there were a hundred and sixty minor league teams. Forty were eliminated. They selected minor league teams uh based on uh some things. One, facility standards. Of course, we have the nicest facility in all of minor league baseball, and we went out of our way. The city was very kind to us. Um, as a lot of people know, my background is in player development. I'm a player guy. Uh, I had an owner once tell me that players are necessary evils. They are not. They are the most important thing. They are our product, and so we have very, very high facility standards. And I know for a fact that minor league baseball, before they went away in negotiating with Major League Baseball, told people that, that Ballpark in Madison, Alabama is the one that we're now going to use as our standard. The commissioner of baseball said the other day that we, the Trash Pandas, are the model franchise in minor league baseball. I need you to hear that. The commissioner of baseball says we are the model franchise. Why? Because of our facilities, our ability to generate revenue, and because of our relationship with our major league affiliate, the Los Angeles Angels. We are- We are the model franchise. Commissioner said on a call the other day that we all had, he said, you need to generate revenue and then increase your value of your franchise that way. And his quote was, "Like every other business." We think we will play around May 1st, and we will play through the end of September. We usually stop playing around Labor Day through the end of September. They've asked us to be very flexible, which is the fact that we may start later, we may start earlier, we may end later, we may play 60 to 69 games. It'll be right around there. There will be no All-Star game this year, and there will be no championships this year because they need to get the players as much playing time as possible. So in other words, in those late dates, rather than there being four teams playing in the playoffs, every team will be playing so that the players can get the player development time. They've also told us that the restrictions with regard to COVID will all be based on local guidelines, which I believe in this, in this area is the state, which means obviously that if Governor Ivy were to open up the stadiums to more than 50% or... The one thing we know is there won't be any mandates from New York that say you can only play in front of a certain crowd. We would like to talk about one last thing, and this is important to us. I believe the presentation just proved that we've kept and surpassed our commitments. In my opinion, we've surpassed our commitments and certainly have surpassed what the contract allows us to do. And I'm asking the city of Madison to help me in having the commitments that were made by the developers, by the state, to be fulfilled. These commitments were made to our fans, our citizens, by the community, and I'm asking for your help. The ramp to and from I-565 must be opened. It has to be opened. It is finished, it sits unused, and that is wrong. It is absolutely wrong. First and foremost, let me say this about that ramp. It is the reason that I'm here tonight. It is without question the reason that I am here tonight, because it was the deciding factor when we decided to put this team in Madison, Alabama. That ramp was cited by our architect, Populus, as making us the most, the best site for a minor league baseball team in the United States. It was that ramp. It made Madison our first choice. I was, I was offered several other possibilities in North Alabama and in other states in the Southern League, and it was the ramp that kept bringing me back to Madison, Alabama. It was our biggest selling point to our investors and the employees that we recruited from across the country. It was a game changer for us. And here are some facts. During the Christmas show, every Friday, Saturday, as well as several Sundays and the days leading to Christmas, we saw lines of cars that stretched downtown Madison Boulevard, down Zert Road, and onto Madison Boulevard. We also saw cars on Integra coming from the west, all the, I'm sorry, all the way to the Integra building coming from the west. Obviously, the ramp would have relieved that by at least 33%, if not more, no, more. We know for fact, because we were told by countless fans that called our offices, that they gave up and left the Christmas show based on comparisons with, they just left. So we had citizens of this city and other cities that left, didn't go to the Christmas show, because the lines were too long, because the ramp was not open. Based on comparisons with similar cities, today I called a lot of cities, and I found out what they did with their Christmas shows. And I find, I believe, in fact, I will guarantee you, the minimum we lost in revenue at the Christmas show was 5,000 cars or $125,000 in revenue. We lost because that ramp was not open. That means $75,000 the city lost in revenue and $75,000 of Trash Pandas lost. We also received countless, I mean, all the way around complaints from Teddy's constituents in Edgewater and Mountain Brook neighborhoods, because they couldn't get to their homes because of the traffic that was tied up on Zert Road, traffic that would have been relieved if the ramp was open. I think the Trash Pandas have not been treated fairly. Our fans and those attending the stadium are not being treated fairly. Here's what I know. At various times by various people, we were promised the ramps to be open in April for opening day, in August again, and in December for the Christmas show. And now what we are told is that the ramp will be open, quote, "by baseball," unquote. I don't know if that's baseball in March, when high school and college games start, or in May, when Trash Panda games start, or April, when the Trash Panda games start. So how do we trust being told that the ramps will be open by baseball when we have been, it has not happened three different times? This much I know, and I will tell everybody here, and you write it down. If we have 7,000 people on opening day and that ramp is not open, it will be a disaster, an absolute disaster. I can promise you that. I can also tell you that we will lose a portion of our fan base if people have to, if people have to sit in line for hours just to get in the parking lot, and those fans never come back. I've been in this game a long time. Those people never come back. I don't know whose fault it is. I really don't care. I heard from Mr. Breland or Mr. Cece about 45 minutes ago, says all they want, Governor Ivy wants a letter that says the city of Madison would love to have the ramp open, and that if they did that, they'd open it tomorrow. The city obviously has a different story. And then I've had three or four reporters in my office today that called Aldon, because everybody's pointing a finger at Aldon, and they've all said to the reporters today, it's not our problems, it's between the city and the developer. I don't know who's at fault. I really don't, and I don't care. We don't care, but somebody is not telling us the truth. The ra, the ramp is ready. Finger pointing is not an excuse, or finger pointing is an excuse. The Trash Pandas had the biggest excuse known to man this season to not perform. We had a contract told us we didn't have to perform. We had COVID-19 that told us we couldn't play baseball. We didn't have to perform, but we did, because we made commitments to our partners in the community. And I am asking your help. I don't think it's this city's fault. I do not in any way think it's the city's fault that those ramps are not open, but I do know this city has influence and can get those ramps open. We need ramps open. You are our partners. I personally am imploring you to look at the promises we made, the promises we kept. Open the ramp, please, is the right thing to do. Thank you.
I guess, Council, if you guys have any questions, you can ask them, or I guess a couple of things. First and foremost, you know, thanks, you know, we talked about letting everybody know where we stand, and I think that's about as upfront and personal as you can get as far as all the things that go along with that. I know the one thing that Ralph missed that I know he would have wanted to say, when they make the commitment to do the light show, they needed the parking lot done in its entirety. We, as a city, because we needed to step in to make that happen so they could make their guarantees, took our public works team and asked them to complete the square. They did, on time, as requested, and it wasn't something that we had to do. And we did, and I can't tell you how proud I am of our public works team for stepping up and supporting that, because you look at the revenue that that generated, which was incredibly positive for our city. Along those same lines, I want to thank Ball Corps for the effort that they put in on non-baseball events. And I know Lisa, in many instances, the genius behind so many of the T-shirts and the phrases that just trashed and a lot of that stuff, but there's an entire team that made that happen. And I think that's very positive, and so we'll memorialize so much of what Ralph said into the final pieces that we'll get to Council as far as the letter going forward, or the, I say the, it's not even a revamp of the contract, just the documentation of what Ralph just talked about. And then I'll end by where Ralph ended, and that is, when it comes to the ramps, Ralph's asked a lot of, said a lot of times, he doesn't know the answers. He does know the answers. He's just as frustrated as anybody else is that this agreement that was given to the developer to build the entire interchange is now down to the flyovers. And they took the responsibility to get that done. The city, in their 2018 contract, gave that to the developers. We've got the right in, right out, ready to open, but at this time, where they say the city can make that decision, there's nobody there that is in place to fund the second part of that. Yes, we could get them open, but that doesn't mean that the second part has the funding that we're needed. So we're working with the governor's office, Alabama Department of Transportation, the town mass and cooperative district folks, Louis Breland and his team. And again, the person who's suffering the most is Ralph, but it is not yet the city's responsibility. We had delegated that, but we are diligently working on that, and so Ralph's point is well taken. But as someone from a mayor's standpoint, working with our city council, our finance chair, our finance team, we are diligently working on accomplishing what you want. So I do appreciate you bringing it to the level that you have, but I also know you know the answer to the questions that you're asking. It's a little frustrating sometimes to get it at that level, but by God, I feel the same way that you do in getting that open, because I can't wait to see what happens in 2021 when it is, and we have an entire season of baseball, non-baseball events, and this community gets to do what it wants to do. So with that said, thank you for the presentation. We'll move forward on trying to get the council the rest of what they need. Also, I don't know if you guys have any questions that you have, but ask those.
I just want to thank you, Ralph, and Ball Corp. Ms. Lisa, thank you all so much for partnering with the city and making it as successful as it was.
I have a question. First of all, I'd like to say how, what a great job y'all did bringing in non-baseball events. It is very encouraging to see how hard y'all worked to do that. My question is, what about the difference between the $646,749 and the $1 million? What happens to that money? That's $353,000.
It's a force majeure clause in the contract where they wouldn't have to pay anything.
So it goes away?
It goes away.
So the city, we still have a bond we have to pay.
I understand.
So the city's going to have to suck it up and pay that difference?
Yes. It's an act of God.
I understand, I understand that.
And part of what we did in securing $2.3 million from the state was to try to make up for some of those differences and then give the money back into our community for masks, for additional things. So yes, the answer is yes.
Do we have any insurance or anything like that? Or is that all nullified?
That's a good question. Any insurance on that? On a third force majeure? Not that we're aware of, but we can look into that.
So it's, our taxpayers get to pay the difference?
Connie, yes, they do. In a pandemic, they sure do.
Okay.
I mean, I look at it a different way. I think it's an incredible, you know, when you take out, you put the 250,000 in there and to see what they accomplished year one without any baseball, but the answer to your question is, is yes. Period.
Teddy, I'd like to point out that I haven't accused anybody of anything.
Oh, I didn't say you have.
I have only asked, ask a question that I know our constituents want the answer to.
Well, that's fair. I think that's a fair question.
And I praise them for the great job that they did to bring us what they did.
All right. Very good. Thank you all so much.
Thank you all very much.
Next, we have public comments. We'd like to be, anybody signed up at the moment? So anybody who would like to address, Councilor and Mayor, please come up. Yes, ma'am. No, go ahead, come on.
I had a question. I was hoping to catch them before they left.
Can you give your name and address?
My name is Latisha Weaver, as we spoke before. I just wanted to address a concern. I live in the area off Zert Road behind the stadium.
Yes, ma'am.
And some of the issues that I haven't really heard get resolved is with the noise. And of course, he addressed the traffic, but I also have a question about the traffic lights. There's two traffic lights for the town of Madison. We're losing one right there at Mountain Brook. It seems like it would back up the traffic to have those lights, you know, like back to back, just to get to Town Madison and not allow a light, traffic light at the Mountain Brook subdivision. So it's the noise and the traffic light.
So two things. One, Garrett is still here with the Trash Pandas. And if you guys, I'm sure, when you get done, if you would, face to face, mask to mask, of course, fill him in on what you're hearing, and as someone who, you know, from a, from a sound standpoint, from a volume standpoint, and somebody that thinks he can probably help you on that end, on how it comes to you, from the traffic light standpoint, that was part of working with Alabama Department of Transportation, knowing the sheer amount of traffic that was going to come in and out of Town Madison, and we, again, part of that is the timing of those traffic lights, which once they get them up, they're very close, as you've seen, they'll start flashing soon, they'll be in place before long. And at that point, we work with them on staggering those lights, so we don't have that backup like you're talking about. But we'll work with Alabama Department of Transportation on those once they get open.
Okay, but did they realize how close it is? Madison Boulevard, a light.
They do.
And boom, boom, a couple of feet, another light, and then boom, boom, another couple of feet, another light. I don't see that as a smart planning.
Well, so I'm, so I'm your councilman, and you're in my district. That Zert Road, and I've briefed this a couple of times at the HOA, and both Mountain Brook and Edgewater, Zert Road is a state project, okay? And until they're, until they complete their project and turn it over to the city, we really can't do anything. The only thing that we're, you know, that we get to do is kind of help them fund that. And I think we funded it at like 5% or something, you know, it's...
Yes.
It starts, it starts out as they're going to fund it 100%, and eventually it gets somewhere where we pay something. And so it's Huntsville paying some, we're paying some, and the state's doing it, and the state controls that project. So until they're complete with it, we can't really, we can't do anything with the light other than what the state says. So that's, that's why it's, you know, taking, taking the amount of time it will take.
And we can give them feedback, which we will, and they'll monitor it, but again, it is their project, and as Teddy said, once we get the project done, then we have more control. But right now, we hear you on our design, and we're just going to have to live with what they have.
And you can look on the website, my cell number's there, you're more than welcome. Just give me a call, and I'll give you more details if you need it.
Garrett can help you with the noise. And thank you for continuing to let us know what you're thinking.
Thank you.
I want to add one thing, though. I will say, because I've talked a bunch with engineering about timing of lights and those things, those don't fall on deaf ears. Engineering does go out and they look at the different lights and look at traffic flow, count, all those kinds of things, and they can update that stuff over time, and so it's kind of a moving target, because varying times a day, they get varying flow coming through there. And so bear with us as you work through that. Once, like I said... Once, like I said, once the road is turned over, then they can go and look at what does all that look like? And then certainly, as we can get the ramps on, then obviously, that should reduce some of that flow and then can update from there. But it's always a moving target. I mean, at this time of year, we thought we'd have everybody going to work, kids going back and forth to school, and now it's a, you know, it's potluck, you know, what you're getting for at any time of day, traffic.
And with you saying that, and from what they mentioned before they left with the, I guess, overpass not opening or whatever, if they start baseball or whatever they're planning, is there still going to be that backup traffic to, like, to get into our subdivision that we ran into with this Christmas and all these other events that they've had with the ramp not being opened?
I think I'll tell you, I don't, I don't know. I mean, we're, you know, I think what you heard earlier.
Yeah.
We gotta get, we gotta get, and we want those ramps open. That'll certainly help alleviate that. We gotta figure out how to move forward on that.
Thank you for your question. Thank you so much.
Good evening. Mike Sheehan.
Thank you, Garrett. I'm sorry, Mike.
I'm yours. Um, I didn't plan to come tonight and speak, but I felt this is an important topic. And I'd emailed Mr. Shaw and CC'd the rest of it before the meeting, but just felt it important enough to come talk about in case you did have some deliberation on it tonight. So I'm going to be reading from the email, and I'm editing it a little bit as I'm talking through, so it might sound a little funny because it was originally written as an email. But I ask for your reconsideration of using Zoom or another virtual option for conducting public meetings. I'm speaking on behalf of multiple members of the public who have reached out to me regarding this and shared with me that you've made a determination to discontinue using Zoom for council meetings. Withdrawing this valuable tool is a step backward from the great progress that you made towards transparency and inclusion. So many members of the public were appreciative and lauding your Zoom initiative, and it held great promise for the future. I recognize that there are people who don't like Zoom for various reasons. I'm personally one of them. But we must look through this, we must look at this through the lens of leadership. We must move beyond our personal discomforts and consider what is the right thing to do. In this case, there could be no question that the right thing to do in the midst of a deadly pandemic is to open up council meetings to public participation via virtual technology. It is not only a legally permissible and proven technology that we have on hand, it is endorsed by the governor and employed widely by the best municipal governments across our state and country. Virtual meeting capabilities provide a reasonable accommodation, that's a legal term, for at-risk individuals under the American with Disabilities Act and other applicable laws. And they demonstrate our city's unhesitant commitment to equal access to council meetings under both the letter and intent of the law. Frankly, technology is not just our now for the pandemic, but it's our future. And we'd be prudent to embrace it without further debate or delay in order to enhance our future capabilities. We shouldn't be followers in Madison. We should be leaders. Please don't feel like you're between a rock and a hard place on this. You needn't keep the peace on this with those that are uncomfortable with Zoom, myself included. Leadership requires making hard decisions, but this isn't a hard one. This is the right one. Over the last several weeks, I've lost two good friends to COVID and several more in the year leading up to that. I've got another one right now fighting on a ventilator for their life. At times like this, it's absolutely unconscionable that people would oppose a simple tool to keep people safe, a tool that we already have on hand and proven we can use well. So I urge you to consider the total context of this legally, ethically, and morally. I encourage you to reinstitute Zoom or a light capability for public meetings. This isn't a lose-lose. We only lose when we exclude people who matter from the discussion or put them at undue risk. We win when we include them and protect them. Thank you as always for your consideration and for your leadership.
So on part of that, Mike, I wanted to address, you talked about inclusion and wanting everybody in and excluding a certain amount of people. When we do Zoom and Facebook only, and we can't do that and Channel 42. So then the people that don't have laptops or don't have smartphones, they don't have a way to watch. You are excluding a part of the community that maybe you don't even realize that you're excluding. So when we do, when we are here, everybody can come here and everybody can see. And at the same time, whenever it's on, it's on YouTube and Channel 42, and we are going to discuss putting this on, on, on our website, that opens it up to every single body. There's nobody excluded because if you do Zoom, you're cutting this section out. If you don't do Zoom, you're, so this, when we have it here, and everybody can come, no, nobody is excluded. And we're 100% transparent. So when you do Zoom, you are excluding people. You may not know you are, but you're excluding some part of Madison City. And if you do, because not everybody either has a laptop, knows how to use it, can afford one, and all those things. So it's not that we're trying to hide anything. I'm, we as a group.
I don't think we're going backwards, I think, but we'll, I'll address that when I have a chance to talk about it.
So thank you, and that's an important point. It's one that I think most of the public isn't aware that it's either or. I would hope that we wouldn't have to do either or. When we broadcast over YouTube or whichever channel we're doing locally, we communicate to the public, but we don't hear back from them. That's what we're missing without having a Zoom option. And I know there are a number of people that have underlying health conditions that really want to come and participate in some of these discussions, and some it's just routine, but some of them, they really want to be here, but they're legitimately afraid for their health and their well-being. I don't know why, I know other municipalities have the capabilities to broadcast in one platform and to broadcast and receive in technologies like Zoom. I don't know what our limitations are. I know that's a challenge for you. I do believe it would be helpful and important for us to communicate to the public what you just communicated, because I wasn't even aware that it's an either-or. But more importantly, I'm hopeful that we can overcome the either-or situation and open up both capabilities for the public, because it's not important just to tell the public what we want them to hear, but for us to hear from the public that we represent as well. So thank you, Garrett. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Ms. Beebe, you had something?
109, Radisson Lane. Sorry, Mr. Nelson left. I'm glad he remembered me. You know, I hate to be that way, but I've lived in Madison too long. I've raised three children here, and Madison has nothing to do with Trash. And I just cannot get myself around a baseball team named Trash Pandas. I cannot do it. I grew up going to baseball games with my father. I love baseball. This stadium is fabulous. I've been out there and gone over it and seen it all. It's wonderful. I would like to go. I'm probably going to have to go to one just because I'm being made to go. But I'm just sorry. I just cannot have anything to do with Madison and Trash. And I have yet to find anybody that likes the name. I say something about it to some people and they laugh. But anyway, okay, I don't have it. Three minutes. Zoom. I am so glad you're not doing Zoom anymore. I like to look at you when I'm talking to you, and I like for you to look at me when you're talking to me or the public. And you can't do that in Zoom. I'm not going to talk through Zoom. I don't mind getting up here. I'm subjected to the virus just like everybody else, but I do like to come here, and I think this is one of the safest places I've been. We're way apart from anybody. You don't get around anybody. I assume you can understand me with my mask on, but thank you for not doing the Zoom. If you want to do Zoom, you can. When I'm out of town and visiting my children, I can, I'll watch you on my, on my computer. They can watch you on their computer. They don't have to watch on Wow. You can watch on the computer. You can't talk, but you can still watch. Now, all ways to get here, and this is the way, right here is the way it's supposed to be, and this is the way it should be. What else is beyond is that? Now, again, back to the Trash Pandas, again, the ramp. No excuse in that ramp not being finished. It was supposed to have been finished in April of 2020, and it's not finished yet. Something is wrong. I don't know what it is. I really do not like us not getting our $1 million. That's what the contract says. We've already had to go back on the contract with the Y. The Y did not live up to that contract. We also had another recreation project here where we lost $2 million because we spent $2 million and then didn't finish the thing. I didn't want to do it. It was completely out of the question anyway. I mean, which it seems like to me, on all these big projects that are millions and millions of dollars, we end up losing. Then Aldo starts something out on the road and messes us all up, and we've spent a lot of money on Bald Road that we have nothing to pay for. But I mean, we just seem to, this seems to be happening all the time. I don't think the public knows about it all the time. Okay, I'm through. Over here on 9/11, 9L, that is a use agreement for the FBI vehicle. The use agreement was not on the extended agenda. That seems interesting to me. I would like to know something about the use, the use agreement on that.
It's under financial.
Ms. Beebe, we made that agreement confidential because it has confidential law enforcement information in it. So we've asked council to approve the use, but we're not disclosing the terms of the agreement.
This just says, vehicle. The vehicle. The vehicle was such that it had to be protected from?
Vehicle use, yeah.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address council and mayor? With that, closed public comments. We'll move into consent agenda and finance committee report.
Finance committee's reviewed the consent agenda, and we've, you know, checked it out, and everything's fine. We do know about the agreement. And also, I'd like to point out two donations from Rocket City Mom Media Group to the rec department for $1,000. And then also Becky Gordon for $1,000 as well to the rec department. That asks for approval.
All right. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? I get the vote, please.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll move into presentation of reports, and we'll start with the mayor.
All right. I'll start off by asking council for approval of Resolution Number 2021-20-R approving the annual appropriation agreement with the Madison Arts Council for their FY21 appropriation of $15,000 to be paid from the general fund.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And motion passes.
All right. Two other quick things real quickly. I know last we talked about the police chief position last time. Ask, as folks are watching, to please let council know any of your thoughts as far as what you'd like to see from a police chief standpoint. I know a lot of you guys have got me comments, Terry comments. We've worked on that job description. I think we're in pretty good shape of pushing it out probably as early as Wednesday, probably Friday. I'll send it to council one last time for your all's review, as you've heard from your constituents on that, to see if there's anything else you'd like to make sure is addressed. So I'll push that out to you guys tomorrow. We'll wait to hear back from you, and then in a couple of days, most likely post that for our nationwide search for our police chief. When it comes to council meetings, a lot of discussion on that. I think what we, what I'd like to propose to council tonight is, in using our format that we've used for years, one of the areas that we, if you guys would like, that we can do is we can add these meetings to our website once they, once they are done. So starting tomorrow, if you guys chose, we prominently, based on especially with our discussion, which I thought was very beneficial, that we had with, on the website, to make sure we have an easy-to-find, up-top, button-view, previous council meeting or current council meeting. So once we have this meeting, we put it back up there. Based on Melanie's help, as far as finding the retention requirements of that, and I'll read what it says. It says, "Audio and visual recordings provide a verbatim account of debated public input at meetings of the municipal council, municipal boards, commissions, or similar bodies. They are normally used only as an aid in preparation of the minutes." And the disposition of those, were you guys to say, yes, please do this, is we would retain that meeting on the website until you approved the minutes from that council meeting, at which point we would take that down. And by that time, of course, we've got the newest meeting coming back up there. So right now, based on that, that's what we would present to you guys that we would move forward and do, starting with tonight's meeting.
Need a consensus?
Yes, ma'am.
What is the compelling need that's driving that we cannot just archive them?
That we just cannot archive them?
What is the problem?
I don't know if there's necessarily, you know, it's not even data space anymore that's there. It's just the retention that's normally done based on typical municipal government. Also, an archive of all of our current city council meetings. I don't know if it's the most beneficial thing that we've ever done. I want to keep people updated on what's going on. You know, one of the other things, and I know in listening to Ms. Spears' talk, when you saw it happen this last time, we're also trying to give a little bit more time for you guys as a council to have and the community to have with the agenda and what goes with the agenda. So instead of trying to get it done on Thursday, we're already working with legal, with Melanie, to try to push that to Thursday, to try to get at least one more day on the front end where people would understand, here's what's on there. If I need to come talk, if I need to give you guys a phone call to say, hey, I want you to know how I feel about this, they would have one more day. On our end, we simply just want to add it in, and when it's approved, we'll take it off. And that's, I don't think there's any compelling reason, Karen, from a data standpoint. I think it's just what we choose to do right now.
But apparently, other municipalities can do it. And so if it can be done, and if people feel this is a more transparent way to go forward, then what is the compelling reason not to do it?
Personally, I'm going to walk before I run. I'm going to start with doing this as requested by a lot of folks, including, you know, you guys, and start that process if we decide that we want to archive those. People have the ability to get that. They can pull it off themselves if they choose to archive that. But at this point right now, that's the first step that I want to take to move that forward.
But then they have to go to the websites of the people that have downloaded it as opposed to coming to the primary site, which is us.
I understand. I'm just going by what, you know, typically, from a state of Alabama standpoint, meetings of, recordings of meetings and what, you know, that's my proposal. You guys can choose to do something different.
And this would just be for the main council meetings?
Main council meetings right now, that is correct.
I think that's a good start. Let's start and see how that goes, and we can always add.
We need to get a vote on this?
I could just take a consensus.
And I want to hear from all you guys. I think, you know, Karen, I'm listening to everybody, but that's my proposal to start with.
Well, in Huntsville, they archive them for, I don't, I mean, apparently forever. I'm not saying we have to be Huntsville. I'm just pointing that out.
It's not that easy on YouTube. And for those that are watching on TV, they don't have that option to record. So you're leaving out a segment that would want to go back.
Yeah, we're going to put it on the website.
They can record Wow.
They can record Wow. Every person out there that has Wow can record this. Every person out there. And then we in turn will record it, we'll put it on our website, we'll have it there for at least two weeks and maybe longer if need be. So yeah, we would, we would have it on there and put it on there.
Does it cost additional money to archive those?
You know, storage, I'm sure, in this world, if Jason can't figure it out, we got a bunch of people who can help him, but I'm pretty sure he can't. So the answer is no. I think we could do it, and I don't know if it would, I can't get any answer if we have to buy additional storage to in turn start archiving all these things, but I can't imagine if we do that we can't budget for it if that's what you chose to do.
So I think we've got a proposal, and we either accept the proposal or we don't and go back. I mean, I appreciate you bringing this up.
Is this a proposal? Are we just saying, yes, we agree, or no, we don't?
It's just a consensus. If we want to do this, we'll move forward with this tonight, and if not, we'll have to do something different.
So not really changing policy or voting on policy, we're just agreeing or not? So not really changing policy or voting on policy, we're just agreeing or not? Am I, am I correct?
I don't, I, when you say policy, I think what you're approving is a change in how we do things to be more transparent and listen to our community who said, would you please add your city council meetings to your website so we in turn can go to that if we couldn't make the city council meeting that night?
Right, which I agree with.
So, so.
That is great.
Yeah.
It's the long-term, if somebody missed something and they come back and, well, what was it two months ago or whatever? What was done, say going back to Kaiser, what was said at those meetings and stuff? And I understand we have the notes and we've approved minutes, but they're not quite as all encompassing as video is. And I think that video just offers more. And that's just my point.
Sure.
Yeah.
Could we possibly try this the way that you proposed and then let's see about getting some input from our citizens? And if they're happy, then that's good. And if they want more, then we can just open it back up for discussion.
Um, I, I, I think the answer to, is, is absolutely. You know, I think one of the things that in listening, that we've had some initial conversations about it and we're trying to find the timing because as I think Jason pointed out, when we approved the upgrade to the website, we had a redo. The redo I don't think comes due yet. I mean, I think we've got four to five, I mean, maybe half a year, maybe a little bit longer before we can do it. So we're going to start that process, but there may be some things that we can do initially to make it more prominent on the website on certain things, the meeting minutes, the, because you know, when Karen can't find that and she knows how, she's looked, she's been doing it a long time. So we want to make it easier to be able to do. So along with the meeting minutes and the, the take, basically the, the URL that would show them the, the site, that's where we'll start. We'll make it more prominent. It's a starting point. If we need to continue to increase it, we will. Absolutely.
Okay. The other thing is, um, just, um, we're throwing out ideas.
Listening to you.
Okay. Um, WoW is a limited audience. I don't have WoW at my house, none of my, my kids don't have WoW. I mean, YouTube is more open. If we livestreamed it through something similar to, for instance, what the school board uses is more open. Um, the, could, instead of, I mean, since it's apparently either or, could we look at a possibly a different platform other than WoW?
Well, I, I, I think in addition to WoW, but I mean WoW right now, i- i- and again, part of just, let's make sure everybody.
I, I'm listening.
Yeah, no, but I, I want to make sure because I know Ms. Bartlett brought it to us and each of you guys will get this question. And so let's just answer it while everybody watching can get this. My gosh, WoW's got a monopoly. Why won't you guys bring more cable companies into the city? We'll bring every cable company that wants to come in here into the city. It's their requirement to put in the infrastructure and I think that's the inhibitor in many instances right now. The good news is Comcast headed this way. They're going up the main thoroughfares. Eventually we'll get into, you know, where they need to, but the city simply requires a franchise fee from any of those. So we would open it up to any platform, whether it's Google Fiber or Comcast or, you know, Bob's Cable TV, if they put in the infrastructure. But channel 42 right now is the availability that we have within the city. And so it's on channel 42 and we're able to stream it on 42. So that gives that crew one side. The other side is YouTube through our website and they can go to that side. So they can go those two places or come to a meeting. We'll archive the meeting and then keep it on there as long as we can. So yes.
Just like I said, I was just throwing out suggestions.
Yeah, we can, I, I think if there's any other plat, other platforms that we could put it on that in turn would, would add without major inhibitors, then we would look to do that. But I think again, part of the starting point is to get it up on the website prominently where people can easily see it and then hopefully give you and the community one more day to analyze what's going to be on the agenda to determine, because not every, you know, BB is, for, for one or two years, has got the agenda on whatever day it comes out and she will be here Monday and she will go see whoever she needs to, to get her answers. And, and I still don't have an answer to the trash pandas, but by gosh, that's just where we are. So it's a good thing, but I mean, we want to be able to give you guys, you and the community, more time on the front end because if they want to give you information on what they feel or ask you guys questions, you have more time to address it. And then on the back end, we'll keep it for a couple of weeks. Starting point, if it's something we need to do more of, we'll gladly do that.
I'll just add that I'm very thankful that we have two platforms because I had somebody say to me, well, why don't you do Zoom and YouTube? And I said, well, what about the folks that don't have a computer at their home? So I, I'm glad we've offered that. Almost everyone has cable TV. They may not have WoW, but I'm glad that we do have a cable TV option for the public channel.
Yeah, I thought it was interesting because when we, you know, it was 2010 or 11 when we first looked to even put city council meetings on a live stream. And the, the argument there was, oh my gosh, if you guys do that, you're in trouble. Why? Because everybody will come to city council meetings to be on TV. Then they'll want to pontificate and talk about things. Well, it's been the exact opposite. For the most part, everybody right now, if they're out there, you know, somebody's eating dessert right now, watching this, and I'm hungry as all to get out, but they're in the comfort of their own home. I think in some instances, it's been to the detriment to the city. We have people who are managing major media pieces for our city that haven't been to a city council meeting in years, but they're writing articles each and every day because they watch it from there and they have no other information from you guys or me, support or Samantha or anybody else. They just watch it, put on what they've, you know, got and get no other feedback. So sometimes it's a detriment to be that far away. So we want to find that balance of bringing more people into the fold of what's happening within our city, but do it in a way where we still have the communicative ways with you guys and us. And I think this is a great first step and if we need to adjust it from there, we certainly will.
And I think Mr. Sheehy's argument about not being able to ask questions and engage is not true because on the agenda, the very, Melanie's last sentence, if members of the public would like to weigh in on a council matter but do not want to attend due to the pandemic or whatever reason, they can contact Melanie if they don't know who their council member is, or if they know who their council member is, they can contact each of us. Councilmember Bartlet had that opportunity when she received a text during the meeting and said, oh, I've got a question here. And, and I'm not saying that sending texts during the meeting, that's kind of a distraction, but if somebody sends a email and says, hey, I, I want to know what this is, you know, can you bring it up at a council meeting and let us know? We're all going to be happy to do that.
Well, that's good for asking questions, but not giving them their own input.
But, but Karen, there is a responsibility for them to be participant instead of giving their input, just throw it out there like a dart with no ability for any of us to say anything. You can't just send an email in and say, read this because I don't agree with you without coming to the city council. So we have the ability to respond to it. And I think there is a balance in that. So you're right. They, from, you know, right now, they can't, if they want to try to do it, we're not doing Zoom. So if they want to come, yeah, yeah, everybody, look at that, we got, if you're watching, I have one, two, I have one, two, I have, we have three citizens right now at our city council meeting.
Right.
Left. Because everything was conducted up front, had big crowd to start with, but only three right now. Yeah. And, and, and so, you know, thanks to everybody here who's staying. All right. So, so guys, I, so, so.
It's not, it's not, it's not possible for somebody to call in if they're not going to be able to Zoom but call in somehow to make their comment?
Why would, why would you want them to do that?
They can do the public hearing part.
Not right now.
They can do it right here.
But then we're back to the pandemic and people that are concerned about coming here for health reasons.
You know, one of the things that we would be willing to do for anybody, and again, if you're watching this right now, if you wanted to come for public comments, but you were afraid to be in this meeting, you could let one of us know. You can find your place. We, we'll text you in the car to say, public comments are coming. You want to come on in and talk. I've offered every person who's had a question, the ability to come talk with me for 30 minutes, an hour, whatever it is, to get every answer you want to that. Some people are choosing not to do that. Some of it because of the pandemic, some of it because they don't want to face us. It's okay. But the answer is if they have the need to come talk before this council, they have every ability to do so and we'll make extra accommodations for them at this meeting.
So y'all don't have a problem if somebody emails in a, a question and we give the person, the citizen's name and, and then as a, as part of a public comment? So some, I, I have a constituent that has a public comment. Would then I be able to read that into the record?
I think that's up to you, but I think that's a slippery slope because you read three, then somebody sends you one, that a lot of things you totally disagree with or there's foul language in it, and then they're going to say, well, you're picking and choosing which one you read.
Well, see, then you wouldn't be able to pick and choose. You would have to, it would be part of your integrity.
Which I think goes exactly back to, you guys were, were elected, I was elected, we all were elected to this position to make the best possible decision that you can. And, and, and you're, you are trying to push information out, you guys are, we are, to our community, but the community has to take responsibility to also let you as the elected official know what they think. Doesn't mean you have to read anything. It means that you take all of it into account and in many instances, they should be able to come right here. Right now it's not, it's, I know, I'm sorry. I, I love your raising your hand, guy. Plus it's his meeting anyway, so. But I think in this case, you know, there's, I think we found a good balance. And if they send something in, it's for you guys to analyze and if you choose to read it, you can choose to read it. You can make every decision yourself on what you decide to do or not to do. That's yours, not ours.
Okay.
Yep.
Public comment is not a requirement.
Correct. All right. So I guess real quickly, I know there's a couple that would like to see more, but you know, maybe.
Is this at least a good start?
Is this a good start to at least get it going?
A start.
Certainly think that we should record this meeting and should put it on our website, let everyone see what that looks like and work with that. That's absolutely a good start.
Awesome. All right. Thank you, guys. And that's all I have.
All right. District number one.
Yes, sir. I wanted to give a shout out to engineering who is here tonight. You saw on the consent agenda and finance committee report, we made our final payment for the Walter Anna Multi-Use Path. That project is officially finished and it came in at $51,167.81 under budget. So I just want to say thank you for that. It was a huge project for our city. I mean, just a lot of different things we hadn't really done in a while. We've done greenway trails where we just had to, you know, knock down a few trees, but doing major work, moving sewer lines, moving cable lines. So I just want to give a shout out to Michelle and Gary and all the folks in engineering, Mary Beth, Director of Development Services, for making that project happen. It's just a huge blessing for our city and that's really all I have.
District number two.
I wanted to thank all of the department heads that took part in the work session. We got a lot of good information and I thought that was very, very helpful information. Also, I would like to thank Melanie for getting our agenda on Thursday. That's very helpful. Those of y'all who are department heads that have your reports or your presentations available for us to review before the meetings, that is very helpful. And that's all I have.
District number three.
No new business.
District number five.
I've got a couple of things. First, a couple of weeks ago, I participated with a Cub Scout group via Zoom on a Sunday afternoon and they were working on building a Better World badge. And in the process of discussing that badge, we talked about the importance of our country respecting the rule of law and how laws apply equally to all citizens regardless of their position. And throughout that process, we had a Q and A and I had a great question from one of the Cub Scouts. And the question was, were there any instances or allegations of voter fraud in the municipal election? So I had never heard of any such allegation, but I confirmed with Melanie Willard and I sent her the question via email and she responded as this. In the 32 years I've worked for the city, there has never been any allegations or instances of voter fraud. And I want to compliment you, Melanie, because that's really quite a statement. I was very happy to share that with the Cub Scout troop and following up. That was a, a very enjoyable event via Zoom. I want to thank Council President Shaw for letting us meet via Zoom for the work session because that particular meeting was really just gathering information. It did not require a lot of back and forth with the council members. I agree, of course, if we could sit together, see each other, that is the best way. I also recognize that we're in the midst of a pandemic. There are people with legitimate fears of coming to this building to speak. And so I also would appreciate our council constantly looking at ways of utilizing technology to help us connect with and hear from our citizen. As we continue to forge this path forward, I think everyone is trying their very best. And I've appreciated the accommodations that the mayor and Council President Shaw have made when I've asked them to have a Zoom meeting or things like that. So I really want to thank you for that. And that's it.
District number six.
All right. The first thing I'd like to talk about is an update on the senior center. I went and I talked to Ms. Ayers. She is wonderful. I love her, her optimism, open to the opportunities of what we could be. So let's not close your mind to anything. Let's open up and see what else we can be doing in the senior center. And I love that attitude. She is so gung ho over there. It's wonderful. And we did discuss the details of the outside area and ways we could make improvements for once that we are allowed to have those seniors back there and have them do more in the garden and still be outside. And so after that discussion today, I talked to Liz Brenton of the MVP to see if they could coordinate somehow and somehow the community could support the needs of the garden or the senior center. So I thought it was great if you could bring two things within the community together to work together. So I was really excited about that. So I put them in contact. There's obviously no promises, but I'm real hopeful that things can come about. Also, I met with the beautification board. They are in the process of the Arbor Day posters. The competition is in full swing right now. We, we went through 154 wonderful posters as we were doing the judging. The children in this city are so imaginative, so creative, so talented. It was really fun to watch what they came up with. And so they'll be doing the presentation soon, but I did want to, to commend the children and the parents for all the hard work that they put into these posters. It's very good. And they also, beautification board is looking for more members. If anybody is interested, either contact me or contact Karen Dugger Lawler and, and get involved. There is so much that they are working on. And other than continually to see how we can keep the, keep the voices of the people heard, I think that's just so important and the way we can do that the best we can. That's one. And that's all I have tonight.
Very good. And district number seven.
I just want to mention one thing, I guess. I travel a little bit throughout the state and it's just dawned on me lightly, a lot of the, the road paving that we do and the benefits of that. I recently was down in southeast Alabama and, and I go out, you know, it's probably no secret, I like to run. So I go out and running on roads that are 50 years old and never been repaved. And, and, you know, after you get done and running, you're dangling knees and your ankles are killing you because basically running on sidewalk and shells and all that. And you come up here and you see what councils have done before us in, in putting in infrastructure in, in place as well as with public works and investments we've done there. And just seeing all the blacktop that you see around. And then you see, you know, I, I think I remember saying it was, it was 20 something degrees outside, maybe, maybe 30. Public Works crews are out there cutting the pavement where we've had trench failures. They're out there digging that up and putting a rock in and, and compacting it and getting ready to repave it and it's repaved. And I mean, it looked better than, you know, some of us who wore the old jeans and had the patches on there. Looks amazing. And so, you know, I hear a lot, you know, our roads horrible and stuff. And you look at it and you go, probably need to, especially in Alabama, get out into some of these rural, real rural areas and really look around and see. We gotta, you know, we can always improve and we always have areas to improve. But when we look at how we got it, I just, it's amazing. So. I think a lot of that goes to public works as well, partnering with the county and their paving contract and what we've done. Appreciate that. So that's all I got.
Very good. I don't have any new business tonight. We don't have any board or committee appointments tonight. We do have one, one public hearing.
Yes, you have proposed ordinance 2020-347. This is to zone a single family lot. It's about 15,200 square feet. It is located in the Skyline Neighbors subdivision where we've seen individual lots annexed and from time to time, and you do have the annexation of this property later on in your agenda. They're requesting R2 zoning, which is appropriate for the size lot. And there is an existing house on this. The planning commission and staff are recommending approval. There was nobody to speak on this item at the planning commission meeting and happy to answer any questions.
We can open, we can open the, open the public hearing. Everybody here would like to speak about that. That will close the public hearing. To approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. We have any discussion? All right. Can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
All right. Motion passes. We're moving to the department reports and we'll start with planning.
So the first item is the annexation request for the subject property. And you have proposed ordinance 2020-345 for the annexation of this property. And again, staff and the planning commissioner are supporting this request.
Move to approve.
All right. Got a motion in a second. Any, any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Motion passes.
Your next item is proposed ordinance 2021-18. And this is just a first reading, but this is for vacation of utility and drainage easement on a side yard. And this is to accommodate a chimney. There'll still be a seven and a half foot easement on the side yard and this will be on your next meeting for approval.
Got a question.
Yes, sir. This is on Fargo.
Okay. We've changed that. Got it.
Okay. All right. And your next item is proposed ordinance 2021-07. And this is for approval this evening. This is vacation of a portion of a utility and drainage easement in the backyard. They're requesting a vacation of about half of the rear yard easement. So it would go from 10 feet down to a five foot easement. And this is to accommodate a retaining wall in the back as they're landscaping their backyard. And all of the entities, Madison Utilities, et cetera, have signed off on this. So we are recommending approval.
Move to approve. Oh, you got to do.
Do what?
No public hearing.
No.
There's no public hearing.
No public hearing. We're standing motion.
Yeah, we had the first reading two weeks ago.
Yeah.
I'll second.
All right. We got a motion in a second. Is there, is there any discussion? Can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine. Councilmember Seifert.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Mary Beth. Next, we have engineering.
Hi.
Hi.
So the first item I have is to request approval for the amendment to flood ordinance pertaining to standards for building sites within subdivisions. So ordinance, or proposed ordinance number 2021-10.
All right. Got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Anything there, I guess, worthy or important to note as part of that?
Anything major that thing's doing for us? What's the primary reason for changing it?
Well, so basically before we had to fill the whole site, but as sites are getting larger, it's not feasible to fill the whole thing. So we're just requesting that they fill the building site instead of the whole area and then put the 100-year flood plain area in a utility easement, basically.
Perfect. We'll make sure they got a little bit more information. Good job.
Can you get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Motion passes.
The next item I had is a request to approve authorizing a change order for re-contracting on Sullivan Street for an amount not to exceed $22,265.51. And this is to lower the water line at Kaiser and Shorter Street.
Move to approve.
Motion in a second. Is there any, any discussion?
Just curious, a ballpark completion time, like it would be this year or maybe next year?
Probably like winter this year.
Winter. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Council President Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye. Motion passes.
So the third item I have is basically proposed ordinance 2021-37 to amend the speed limit on Front Street between Pension Row and Sullivan Street. And it's a first reading.
All right. Any discussion? Y'all have any questions about that now?
I just think that's in your district, right?
About 25.
I'm sorry. What was the speed limit now and going to?
I think it's 40.
40.
40 to.
25.
Oh, excellent. Because that's a very dangerous, I mean, I know this is first reading, that's a very dangerous corner where you turn right to go to Palmer. So I'm glad to see that we're going that speed limit. That's a good safety thing.
Good.
Thank you.
So much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any miscellaneous or business? Motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Good.